Start with public comment. If you approach the podium and make your comments in regards to this hearing.
I made sure that I wouldn't forget. So I take this. Mr. Mila Hadorkmanor, he, with the name of God, most gracious, most merciful. My name is Ijelal Munir, and I have lived here in Dalton since 1987. Today is October 26, 2019. I raised all of my six children here in Dalton, which was said to be classified back then as a blue collar village. I was very involved in Dalton's Concerned Citizens Meetings during the time when Don Hart was the mayor. I watched my village deteriorate after every new mayor and their boards were elected from having Baker Square filled with all types of pies that I bought for Thanksgiving dinner and cakes for birthdays. Our family regularly ate at the Red Lobster and we shopped at Eagle's Food Store. All of these businesses were off Sibley Boulevard. My three sons were Dalton Bears, beginning with the Woodjits until they aged out. One of them went to the NFL. My family made it a regular date to go to the movie theater that was right next door to where we are right now in our village hall, where five people were shot inside that very same facility. Were these new cannabis weed businesses filled with every type of weed imaginable? In all types of creative sweet edibles? Invest in bringing back Baker Square, Red Lobster, food stores? Or would these new weed businesses create facilities? Build recreational and educational cultural buildings for our children within Dalton? Namely Thornridge High School, Lincoln Junior High School, Burger Vandenberg Elementary School, Franklin Elementary School, Deepman Elementary School, Roosevelt Elementary School, and Harriet Tubman Elementary School? Seven in all. According to Wikipedia Dalton has only a total square area of 4.68 square miles, of which 4.56 square miles or 97.44% is land. What will these new weed businesses bring to our 3,017 students who attend these seven schools to enhance their well-being? Will they build new facilities for them? Will they bring wholesome businesses here in Dalton for them? What will these new weed businesses bring to the growing senior population here in Dalton? A community is generally known for how their children and seniors are cared for. Will these new weed businesses help pave our streets or fix our old ways bursting water pipes underground? Or will they be deteriorating further based on my concerns as a resident of Dalton and these weed businesses, payday loan businesses, slot machine businesses, and liquor store businesses within Dalton's 4.56 square miles, serving seven schools for 3,017 children versus Baker Square-type businesses, Red Lobster-type businesses, cultural centers, educational centers, wholesome entertainment facilities? The Dalton, Illinois, 60419, as they make millions, mayor and the board. Our children do not live in the desert. If I wanted to go to the desert, I can fly there. Thank you.
I understand what the young lady says, and I agree with her. But the other thing that I would like to make a comment on, that I have multiple sclerosis. I've had multiple sclerosis for over the past 15 years. I've lived in Seattle for over 10, and over on the west coast where cannabis, and it's not weed, it's cannabis, is illegal. Do your research. Investigate the purpose of it. Investigate the income that it would bring in. I use a salve, a cream for my MS. It helps. It's not the point of smoking it or whatever. It's what other things that it can provide. Yes, you have to be cautious with your children and whatnot. I understand that, and I totally agree. But for health reasons, it is important. Yes, we could use it here, because if we don't have it here, guess what? It's going to be in Chicago. It's going to be in other suburbs, just like they're doing the casinos right now, which means that everybody's going to be going everywhere else. So I do agree to have it, because it's for people that have illnesses, it benefits us. Thank you.
This particular legislation is not for medical marijuana. Medical marijuana has been approved for several years now.
I would like to hear from our board. How do you guys feel about it, one way or the other?
I would say this, watching the news a couple of, well, every morning, but watching it just a couple of weeks ago, Schaumburg had, their board decided to go with, approve six dispensaries, and that's in Schaumburg. Also Lombard has also approved to have dispensaries as well. So these are villages that have funding. They don't have problems that we have. So again, I'm looking at revenue. That's what I'm looking at. The revenue, what did it generate and what it would do? A lot of things that we need fixed here, we don't have the money. We don't have the funding. But bringing in, and again, you're thinking about location. Of course, we don't want it by churches, schools, where the children are, but I approve of it. Being here to generate revenue, we need new streets. People complain about alleys. We complain about the water department. We need to get updated on a lot of things that we utilize here for the village. We're behind time. As far as technology, we're about 20 years behind eight ball.
You say weed. On your mind notes, like somebody, you know, when you hear weed, you think somebody coming to you, hey, I got some weed. It's not, it's not that. You know, you're talking about really professional businesses. I got a chance to go to a little class about dispensaries and how they're going to look. These are not just like your mom and pop liquor stores. These are high-end stores that they want to invest a lot of money into. So I am looking at the fact that we do need the revenue. We definitely need the revenue, and at the same time, we have to monitor. We don't want it to be willy-nilly. We don't want it to be crazy. But the experience that I've had on dispensaries and the people who want to invest in dispensaries and dispensaries they're trying to set up in Chicago, I was blessed to be a part of a group that was trying to get minorities invested in dispensaries. But they had a whole mock-up or write-up of their, of the, of the actual bill. Very high-end. It reminded me of an Apple Store. If anybody went to Apple Store and bought iPhone, these are not, these are not just ragtag stores. It's going to be a lot of money. You got to have $100,000 to even get the license. So these people who are doing this, they have money, and I understand. I want, in the midst of, you write payday loan stores and liquor stores, then you hear, oh, you're going to do a weed store too. It's just, it's not, it's not that. It's not, when you hear weed stores. And I'm very aware of the liquor stores and the payday loan stores, and I don't want a tremendous amount of that. At the same time, we have to look at the revenues going to generate, and if they don't, if we don't get it here, the surrounding suburbs are going to get it, and all they're going to do is come here, and if they don't get it from us, they're going to get it from another community, and they'll get the benefit from it. And at the same time, it's not a medical marijuana store or medical dispensary, but at the same time, people, I have MS as well. So there's a lot of people who have that condition, like Sister said, marijuana and that stuff with their conditions. But I'm, I'm looking at the revenue, but I definitely feel that we have to monitor it. We have to look at it, and we have to come with actual facts of what it's going to produce and what is, what is going to be done with that money that it generates, that revenue that generates for the town, because we definitely need it. We definitely need it. When you look at the streets, when you go out through some of the streets and you look at the reality that we don't have the money to actually fix the streets, that's what we have to look at, the extra revenue that it will generate.
My views piggyback on what you guys have said. I'm all in favor of it as long as it is monitored correctly and the funds that we generate are watched carefully and used properly. It's here. It's not going away, and why shouldn't we get the monies that everybody else is going to reap? We need it. So that's just my opinion. That it's ran properly, that the correct people are over it, making sure that it is ran properly, that it's not just Joe, Joe Willie on the corner selling dime bags. This is a professional business, and it has to be managed professionally.
I mean, we got to get with the times. It's legal, okay? It's legal. Now's the time for people to get up and say something. You know, don't wait until after something is passed and now you want to get mad at everybody on the board. Now's your time. The few of you that are here, what's your opinion? How do you feel about it? It's here, whether they buy it here or somewhere else, it's still legal. Bottom line, it's legal. So I mean, do we want to benefit from the revenue? I know I've heard one resident say, all, all money is not good money, but it's here. Bottom line, it's here.
Ms. Diane, are you for or against?
Oh, I'm for it. Okay. I'm for it. No, I'm for it. You know, it's, it's here. You know, it's legal. Like someone said, if they don't sell it here, I think it was you Steve, if they don't sell it here, they may sell it in Harvey, Cayman City. I mean, it's, it's, South Holland is driving, guess what? They still drink, you know? They come to Dalton.
I wasn't going to speak, but a couple of people cajoled me, and then when I heard a couple of people speak that's for it, as I had to say something. When I was a young boy, I ran the numbers, and for anybody over 50 know what that means. It's called policy. I didn't know it was policy at eight, nine, 10 years old, but it became what we call the lottery, right? And so the government, whenever they can see they can make money off illicit activity, they do it. Alcohol was prohibited at one time, then they legalized it, and as you say, now you can drink legally, and our, and our society suffers from that, tobacco, marijuana. It, it's coming, like someone said, but I want to go on record that I'm against it on a moral basis. I don't want to get into detail on that, but for the village trustees and the mayor, you got to look at this as not being a panacea. What is the backup plan? The village of Dalton needs a comprehensive economic plan. There's no guarantee that we're getting legalized marijuana to be sold for recreational purposes, not medical purposes, for recreational purposes. What is the backup plan? I read an article recently, Mayor, that you said you're even considering getting a bond to pay for the police. And as you know, I'm, I'm totally against continuing getting these bonds to get us out of trouble. What is our backup plan for a comprehensive economic plan for the village of Dalton in the event that we don't get this legalized cannabis, marijuana, whatever you feel comfortable saying, the backup plan? The low turnout for this meeting is simple, it's apathy. Just like there was apathy for the latest election, not only here in Dalton, but around the country, there's apathy that, that's created throughout the country. That's part one. Part two, the reason why this is not promoted, I mean, that we're not here, because it's not promoted. It's not promoted like your coffees with the mayor or any event stepping at the fountain when you get multiple texts going out, something going out in the water bill to let the people know that this is important, that you should have a voice. I can't judge you because you want to continue to smoke marijuana, smoke cigarettes, drink alcohol, you know, shoot yourself up, but I know one thing about cannabis or marijuana that's happening with young black people. This marijuana that they have now is tainted. It's not the marijuana that we smoked back in the 70s or the 60s, and anybody that's got their ear to the ground knows this. These young boys are being feminized by the marijuana that's on the street. There's two elements in marijuana. One is THC, that's the element that gets you high and gets you out of your mind, and the other one is what? Anybody know it? CBD. Everybody familiar with that? That's the medicinal part that you referred to. That's not what they're, that's not what they're talking about. They're talking about marijuana that's supposed to be clean, safe, and you can get your high at a smoke shop or at home or wherever you're going to do it. It's inevitable. It's coming. It's coming just like the lottery came. It's coming like legalized liquor came. It's coming like gambling came. It's all going to be legalized, and that's a sign of the times. Revenue that could be given. So this is to the mayor and to the attorney, and the mayor mentioned a number. I want everybody to hear that number again and what it's based on, how much that revenue they, they tend to get on that. And number two, if the attorney can tell us, what are the chances of us getting cannabis shops in the village of Dalton? And I'll reach your answer.
Duane, good to see you.
Good to see you always.
To answer your question, I haven't got the slightest idea, and nobody in this room has the slightest idea about what the market is going to do. Let me mention a few things. I apologize for being late. It was a, it was a bit of a honeydew early Saturday morning, if you know what I mean. All a single municipality can do is say, we're, we're open for business. The licenses are limited, as you know, and from the state level, it takes a, takes a big investment.
$100,000 for the license, $25,000, I think, for the application.
Yeah, plus.
No refund.
Plus build out.
Yeah.
And there's, there's extensive state regulation in terms of hours, the setup and take-down security, so it is, it's an expensive proposition, and nobody knows what the market will be. And let me mention, I think everybody understands that we're licensing cannabis, and we had a meeting with a potential dispensary, and I, I prefer the regular word retailer, with a retailer, and we thought that the city had, you know, some, a nice commercial area where we intersect with, you know, heavy traffic area. It wasn't the area they were looking for. It surprised the heck out of us. They wanted to, they were looking at an area which was right off the interstates, kind of a standalone area. That was completely the opposite. I would have thought that they wanted.
Love's Gas Station type, off the expressway type?
Well, kind of like that, but you know, off of I-55, if you know, Route 83, Cass Avenue, that area between, you know, west of, west of Hinsdale and, between there and Bowling Brook and Romeo Vale. It really surprised us, you know, because they were looking for a couple green grass sites to, you know, to build on rather than nestling into a, a show, because there's, there's economic challenges, social challenges, things change, and I said, you know, to show you how things change, if 10 years ago I told you that in 10 years I could legally smoke a joint while betting on college football games, you would have put me in a mental institution, right? But this is the world we live in. These are, in one sense, they're self-imposed taxes, and there's no turning back the clock. And just let me close by saying, last week, there was, you know, Chicago just allowed it, and one of the, one of the aldermen said, if we don't allow it here, every tax dollar that could have been obtained from this is a tax dollar we're going to have to get from somewhere else. So I think, you know, for the limited purpose of this hearing, it's just to let the people know that there's, that the board is favorable to allowing it. Who knows? I'm going to say in two or three years, the cannabis things will just be like Benny's Beverage Depot.
DuPage County, the conservative end was $4 million, and on the upper end, $10 million. Mayor, what is, what is your projections based on your research and introducing this to the residents?
I looked at and spoke with mares where it's been legalized, especially Colorado, Denver, one year, and of course, they have a bigger population than we do. They took in $234 million in sales tax revenue just from the sale of marijuana. Certain items, whether it's clothes or whether it's food, people addicted to food. So it's abuse of anything that actually hurts the, the image of it. Secondly, Mr. Munir, I'm going to say you can't expect these businesses, whether it's a dispensary or whether it's a food for less or a truck stop, to bring other businesses in. It's those private investors that, that make the decision, it's a good opportunity when they locate in different villages. And some say no. They're not obligated to, to give back. Some, some do it more than others. Some do it on a regular basis. Some said, I helped last year, I'm not going to help this year. And the amount that they contribute back to the village is, is a different amount. But certainly, we, in our hands, since I've been in office, the businesses here, especially new businesses that come in, I ask them to, to hire from within, and, and a lot of them have done that. And it's directly reflected in the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics in regards to where we were when I came in office and where we're at now. And so every business has an individual level of contribution that they give back to the community, if they give any.
My name is Lustelone, Commissioner of Dalton Park District. I also been out here since 1983. I raised my family out here, and they all doing well and successful. I was a blue collar worker at Ford Motor Company when I moved here. You know, the neighborhood changes, everything changes. I was on the west side, the west side changed, you know? High park changed, everything changes. But marijuana is here, and it's here to stay. I'm going to tell you that. It's here to stay. I be all over the state of Illinois because I'm a trustee on the Illinois Association of Park District. I travel this state. And all the park districts is getting ready for it, for the new laws and everything. So it's here. And revenue coming in, we sure can do the revenue, because we just laid off half our staff, you know, because of taxes. Our, basically, all our money come in is taxes, you know? Program, we do program, but half of them can't pay. I go to my union and subsidize some of the funds and fees for these kids. But some money, extra money coming in for taxes? Yes, we can use it. And for us, smoking marijuana, come over there in the morning, 10 o'clock, when these 21, 22-year-olds come in to play gym, play ball, you get high when they walk through the door. But they go in there, they play their ball, and let out their energy, get in their car, and go home. So I'm for it.
I just want to continue from last, because I never got a, Mayor, you said, you used example of Denver, 234 million, which is not a very good example. Then later on, you say you really don't know what it would bring in. And, and again, I don't want anybody to misunderstand, like the commissioner said, it's coming, it's here. But what is our backup plan? And attorney, you said, we don't really know if we're going to get it or not. What is the backup plan for the economic development of the village of Dalton in case we don't get these dollars from this panacea of marijuana that's going to be the heaven that's going to deliver us? What do we have in place in case that it doesn't happen, and as the attorney stated, we just don't know if we're going to get it or not? And the last thing, Mayor, you, you keep continuing to talk about the labor statistics. It's comprehensive. The economy of the United States has improved over the last 10 years. It's not just Dalton. It's, it's the entire economy. You know, we got about a, almost a 3% unemployment rate, but we don't come to a town to improve our employment rate. The employment rate is based upon a national and a statewide basis, and then, of course, it trickles down to the municipalities. But there is no answer that I've heard yet, what we would, what would we receive? I think the closest one, Attorney Murphy, you said, $4 to $10 million, DuPage County, which is a totally different county than Cook County, especially this portion of Cook County, which is called the Southland. My thing is, I want to go on record that we should work on a comprehensive plan for the village of Dalton to get us out of this mire that we're in. That's what should be Plan B. If Plan A, which is the panacea of marijuana, doesn't work, what do we have to make us get better?
I would suggest, residents, that you look at the last finance committee meetings. This last budget we passed, we didn't have to take out no extra bonds. Only bond we took was the home disposal bond, which been taken out for the last consecutive few, for three, three, four years. So progressively, the, the village finances are on a.
I'd like to know, would there be black contractors doing this business? Because when those guys came out of there from smoking weed, that center you all had built over there was built by white contractors.
I live here, we all live here. I don't want to see no more liquor stores and none of that. I got a chance to sit down with South Holland's economic developer person, you know, I, because we're so close, we always get the comparison, the South Holland, well, can we be like South Holland? Can we be like South Holland? Or I got a chance to meet with the mayor of, I think, Park Forest, where Donald Miller's office is. Is that Park Forest or Oak Forest?
Oak Forest.
Oak Forest. I got a chance to sit down and talk with him, and he, they always stressed. I asked him, what do you do different to, what do you do to get businesses here? He said, the first thing businesses come and look at is a board meeting. That's the first thing they come and look at. And if anybody lives here and watch our board meetings, if you, if you watch our board meetings and you want to be an investor here and you come to a board meeting, you say, I'm not investing in this town. So, so that's, that's something that we have to work on as a community.
It's Plan A, Plan B. To me, Plan B is the marijuana dispensary. Plan A is we continue to do what we're doing now. Because you can't spend what you don't have. We don't even know if we're going to get a dispensary. The meeting is about if they do give us a license, or we are offered a license, is this something that the residents want or agree with? You know, this is why, this is the time, people, to come up and say, you know, however you feel, whether you're against it, for it, or yea, nay.
I just want to correct you. We don't get the license.
Oh, we don't get the license?
No. The private investor has the license. They choose to cooperate or get involved with the municipalities.
So, so how does this work? So then they would just come to you, or can you entice them, or, I mean, how does, how's this process going to work?
Well, so far, they've been reaching out to us.
Okay.
In regards to wanting to locate here. They look for prime locations. We had this map developed in areas that could be, could work for them and areas that cannot work for them. Someone mentioned schools and churches and things like that. So, and then, of course, from John's perspective in DuPage County, they wanted to be in an area that we, that they thought would work for them, but they want to be in a different area. So I've met with the different investors, different companies that want to do the cultivation and the growing and also the, the retail. And then also, there's a part of this legislation where the consumer consumption locations are actually part of this legislation. So just like you go to buy the drink, you can go to a place to smoke. The amount is also in this legislation. I think it's 30 grams per personal use. Those facilities where they go in consumption cannot sell it, but they can sell food and soft drinks and stuff like that, not alcohol.
Well, maybe it would help us a lot if you explained the map that you have here?
Yeah.
Because I didn't know it was here. -because I didn't know it was here.
Yeah.
I just saw something sitting on the tape. I really didn't know. So maybe it would help, uh, in some perspective, if you, you know, explain, explain, explain to the residents exactly where, where they may be located, how far from a school it would be located, you know?
Well, that, that hasn't been decided yet.
Okay.
We're in process of putting an ordinance together. We have to do it by the end of the year. Those, what was the, what's the October 30 deadline, John? For-
That doesn't affect us. We, we just, because the new law goes in, we, we-
Right.
-will get that combined with the tax.
Okay. So, so there are some communities already have everything in place. They've, uh, those dispensaries that they are gonna do business with have already choose locations, have already bought locations. I think in Northbrook, and there were some protests, um, they bought a abandoned gas station that they're gonna convert to a dispensary.
Present the silent majority, which most of us in here are. Uh, no one is saying anything, emphasizing the fact, uh, as a matter of fact, I am for the cannabis, to just bring that straight out upfront. But, uh, I see most of us here, no one saying anything because we are in favor of it. You hear the, the negativity has a louder voice in a lot of instances. And we have an opportunity here in Dalton to make a lot of money in this marijuana. And we can sit here and cry about this, that, or the other, when everyone else is out here making all kind of money. And we sitting back, and, and after the money's all, after everybody has all the money, then we gonna say, we should've done this, that, or the other. The Commissioner just explained his situation, whereas we were dollar late and other people made all the money. Why can't we get some of this money upfront? Let's be proactive. Let's go out and get people to bring the money back into this town and let's, uh, let's reap the benefits of this marijuana. It's, it's here to stay and no one, none of us are big enough to stop this. I was reading article the other day, eight billion dollars is going to be in this marijuana industry within the next five years. B, I didn't say, uh, M, I said B, billion dollars. Now let's get some of this money.
Good morning.
I am one of those that has kind of stepped away because I didn't like all of the bickering and the arguments and nothing was getting done and people calling people out. I, I don't have time for that. We, as residents, don't get the services that we need because there is no money. Um, I, I'm, I'm not happy about what's happening, but it's happening. There's nothing that I or anybody else can do to stop it. It's here. However, this is my thing, if Dalton can profit from it and it alleviates some of the problems that we have, I'm for it. But here is my thing. My problem is, is Dalton, is the village, is the police department, are you prepared for what it, have you looked at what it's going to bring? The traffic? I don't want it anywhere near where I live because I almost walked away from my home because I don't like what's going on. I can't sell it. I can't pay the taxes because it's ridiculous. I don't get services. When you pick up the telephone and call, they're like, oh, you live in South Holland. Oh, no, we don't do that because that belongs to the railroad. This is Dalton. I don't care where the railroad, if it belongs to the railroad. Oh, no, that's a county problem. This is Dalton. In order for us to get along, we have to come together as one. We have to take pride in our property, we have to take pride in our village. I'm stepping back in to view. I'm stepping back in. And some of my neighbors have decided to step back in, so you're gonna see more of me. I'm going to challenge you. I'm not going to be vicious about it because that's not the way to go. However, I want you all to think very clearly, because you were not prepared for what happened on my side of town last month. I think it was last month or so, when we had the shootout at the OK Corral. And I'm talking about the robbery that was on Sibley Boulevard. That, to me, is a problem. My area is deemed as, oh, it's really good, we don't have any problems, so there's no need to do. We're behind the, or in front of the railroad tracks, because we're east of the railroad tracks. Nobody wants to do anything. So I'm hoping that with this coming in, that you all take into consideration the security, the children. That day that that shooting was going on, nobody knew what was going on. That was at the end of my block. Nobody knew what was going on. I didn't even hear gunshots. What I heard was the helicopter. And that is very alarming. Then to the fact that there's other issues that are happening on Sibley that I avoided. And I, I shouldn't have to say that to you, but I want to drive the point home. We've got to bond together and we can't be negative, we can't shoot down. But all I'm saying is, if this helps bring in money, because I don't wanna come to you and this is going on, well, we don't have the money. My street is terrible, it's caving in. When you go to the end of the block and you make that curve, the street is terrible. You can't just patch it, it needs to be paved.
You're right.
You can't patch it. They patched my driveway, there was a crack that went completely from my driveway all the way across the street to my neighbor's driveway. And they patched it, but that's not gonna last. If this opportunity brings in money, great, let's do it. But I don't want somebody to say that we didn't have the money, we were doing this and we were doing that. You have to take care of your residents, because your residents are walking. They're walking. Because they don't really feel that it's worth trying to keep it up. Property taxes are going up and we are in this area. Our property taxes are evaluated so high, our taxes are so high for what we have. I have two vacant houses on my block. And one, one of them has been vacant for years. Am I not correct? Yes, for years. But nobody does anything and the railroad track, and that's where they hide. People are taking and dumping into that creek or that canal. I don't care who it belongs to, it's in Dalton. So Dalton is supposed to make us feel like we're wanted. And don't say, well, it's not our property, it's not our job. You make us do things that don't belong to us. And I say that if we have to clean up these areas that belong to the railroad, railroad's not gonna do it. So we have to do it, the village, all of us. But don't tell me or send me for a runaround. And Mayor, I will sit down with you later and tell you in my research what I've come up with. Because you need to go back and take it to the rest of the board and work on these problems. Because nobody knows nothing, they don't wanna do anything. So that's what I have to say. But I do wish that you all take the security issue, this stuff, in, into consideration. I don't want it over by me. I don't know if that just, that green area, which is to the east, if that's where it's proposed to be or where it's gonna be, but I don't wanna see it like poker places popping up. I don't want it on, on, on King Drive and Sibley. Because we got enough problems going on. And this is going to bring in a big problem. So I'm just saying, be prepared for this. And you should have this on hand. I understand what he's saying, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Mohammed is saying, as far as do you have a plan? But that's the only thing I'm concerned with, is the security of the residents of Dalton, the children. You know, kids can't walk down the street, I can't go down Sibley. And I tell my children and my family to stay off of Sibley. Everybody on my side, they avoid Sibley. Why? You know why?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Dorothy Pitts, I live over on Edden Brook. I'm a retiree.
Yeah.
I retired from MB Financial. First, I wanna say, I am for the cannabis.
Yeah.
Because we need it.
Yeah, bring the mic down a little bit and then, then may help too. Oh. Hold it, hold it, you can hold it too.
Okay, I got it. And, uh, I'm an older person. I don't have any children that I'm still raising. My children are all grown, have grandkids, a great-grandkid. But with the cannabis coming in, you know, I heard someone say that, uh, what about our children? We have to start with our children at home. You know, our children go up and down the street, they run here, they run there, but we should control our children. As Mr. Mohammed said, that when he was coming up, he ran this and he ran that, you know, for, I guess, the mob, because that's the only thing I've heard of. And, uh, but my kids grew up too, my kids grew up and my kids weren't good kids, any better kids than anybody else's. But you have to control your kids. The cannabis now is run by kids. Okay, what are we doing to control our kids? To keep them safe, to keep them from running, you know, as they say, weed up and down the street? Okay, weed the bunny, I think it should come in. And I think we should all be for it. We complain about our streets, we complain about this, but we don't have the money. And if we don't have it, we can't fix it. So why not let this come in and help us? You notice all the statements of suburbs that have this money, it's suburbs that's already got money. So why can't we get it and help ourselves? You know, in, as far as having a plan? You can't plan on what you don't have. You can only plan for what you might get. So we can't, I don't see that we can say, okay, I'm gonna put this here, I'm gonna put this there. Okay, you go through wasting all this time making all these plans and then you don't get one, even though I hope that we do, you know, get a license or someone with the license come into Dalton. But right now, you know, let's take this step. Let us get, uh, someone to come in and sell it here or whatever. You probably won't ever see me in one of the places, but I don't object to it coming in. So let Dalton make this money. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning to Dalton, Mayor Rogers, and to the board. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna be speaking on two different hats. So one as the Cook County Commissioner of the sixth district, but then one as a person whose husband owns a business in Dalton, on Sibley. So, um, we have concerns as citizens and we also has, have concerns as, um, representatives of government. So first, I just wanted to say that, as we all know, the state of Illinois has approved the sale of legalized recreational cannabis. So, as many people have already stated, it's coming. So townships, uh, towns have the right to vote to sell it in their communities or not. So I will say, the village of Tinley Park did just recently vote to not sell it in Tinley Park, okay? So opportunity is where people allow it to be. So if Dalton decides to apply and be in bidding for this, then it does bring revenue, there's gonna be revenue that comes with that. Also, from the county level, um, if we go back to when they first started talking about this, the county was not even posed to get any of the funding for recreational cannabis until they went back and said, hey, wait a minute, we're not getting any of the funding for this? And then they had to go back and fix that. So all of this is new. I just kinda use that as an example to say it's all an evolving process, so it's all new. And if anyone wants to go back and look historically at prohibition and how that all happened, it's sort of the same process as what we're up against now. So now, as a person, I'm talking, not as the Commissioner, as a person who, um, my husband's office is in Dalton and, you know, many of you might know, he's a dentist here and he was the state rep for this area. And the day of the shooting, he wasn't even aware of what was happening right down the street. And so, of course, like someone else mentioned, you don't want your family driving up and down on Sibley, it could be dangerous, you know? I felt that kind of angst myself when I had to call my husband to have them patrol certain areas. And these are things that help. And that funding was granted and they've been here for a period of time, helps changing with the times and what's going on. Uh, people are getting jobs, they come and recruit from different areas. At my alma mater, at Howard, they come from all across the country to recruit kids to go into these jobs. For being here this morning to show your concern and care for the community. So we are about to go into budget hearings for the county. And I would love for half of you to even show up at the Markham Courthouse on November 4th and come and hear the county's budget, because we can't talk about property taxes and reforming property taxes, we can't talk about the sheriff's office and lack of police on the streets in different areas. If people don't come and tell their stories of why we need extra money or money diverted into certain areas. Every time that I have gotten information lately, I've been asking people, what community to look at ex-offenders and people who need housing? 27 people testified at the county that day. One person mentioned the South suburbs, because I was counting. So we had 27 people where they think, ugh, well, this is a big deal in certain areas, but only one person mentioned the South suburbs. And I mentioned to every person who comes to my office, if you aren't showing me how this impacts the South suburbs or what it means to the South suburbs, come back with that information or don't come back. Because I don't wanna hear what it means to the city of Chicago when we're talking about how it affects the Southern suburbs and the 36 municipalities that I represent, okay? That to say that we have to get together and form these coalitions, make our voices heard, come to the meetings, it's great you guys are here, come to the county meeting, spread the word, because they remove those around. I'm going to the one in Skokie, I promise you that one's gonna be packed.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And it's gonna be packed with people and they're gonna be testifying and they write their notes and they come with their facts and figures. And then when things are coming to their area, they are vocally supportive for or against, whatever it is, they're for or against. So I invite you to that meeting. The other thing that I wanna let you know that's happening from the county's perspective is we have a South Suburban Economic Growth Initiative. It is, we were talking earlier about how you go to these businesses and they gotta look at what's going on in certain areas and how they're going to position bringing their business to a certain area. That's what the Development Authority is gonna try to help streamline. So if a hotel is coming to Posen or wherever it's gonna go, maybe the Development Authority can help make sure that happens. So that's something else that I wanna encourage you all to pay attention to, because again, when these things come up, we don't want people to say, well, how come it wasn't in Dalton? Or how come it wasn't in South Holland? Or why wasn't it in Linwood? It wasn't, that was not, that's not gonna be the focus, but it would be great for you to understand, because this is a brand-new entity that's gonna be created and it's never been done in Illinois, there's only two in the entire system's numbers as a hard-to-count area. And guess what? We have no applications from the South suburbs for businesses or people who wanna form or whatever you're talking about. I just tell them, well, you're not talking about the South suburbs, so basically I don't care. Okay? So come back when I can care. And then we can start talking from there. So I'll just leave it at that.
How many communities do you represent?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Yes. 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 Can we take questions? Okay.
Thank you. Very much.
Wait one second.
Okay, I can hear you.
Commissioner Miller-
Yes.
-your husband is on my Facebook page, I've seen your children grow up.
Oh, thank you. Yes, you've seen them grow up.
I've seen them grow up. Your husband's business, you said, is on Sibley. He's a dentist. And do you have any idea how close he wants one of these cannabis, cannabis weed businesses-
Can I put the mic up a little closer?
How he wants it close to business?
Yeah, how close would he prefer it to be?
I don't know if he would prefer or not prefer, so I would ask him that, but I just think, in general, you just have to look at business opportunities as the opportunity that it is.
Two quick questions for you. One, you mentioned the bidding process for cannabis. Could you explain how that will work?
The bidding process for cannabis?
You mentioned bidding, yes.
So I was talking in general, on how they go, but that's a state function.
Okay. Second one, which is more down your line, probably, you mentioned the budget coming up November 4th. Can you explain, I've had a lot of conversations with Attorney Murphy, the tax rate for the Southland, with about 23%, 24% compared to Lake Forest, Winnetka, Skokie. What can be done to bring that down?
Well, the first thing is, we have a new assessor. So that was step one, okay? So the assessor's office is the office that assesses the taxes. The assessor also now has, which I was in support of, we had unanimous support for the Assessors' Data Modernization Act that was, has to be legislated in Springfield. So we need our state reps here at this meeting.
But they, they know this. I mean, they live in the south.
They know this, but they have to be supportive, and they can only be supportive if we ask them to be. They were not all supportive from the south suburbs, even though the chief sponsor of the bill is Will Davis, who's the majority leader in the House.
Right.
And all of our South Suburban legislators were not on board with that.
Okay.
Okay? So we need to send them a letter. We need to send them 100 letters, 1,000 letters, saying, "Why are you not supportive of this?" We need to ask them to have a town hall on the Data Modernization Act. It might improve what happens in the south suburbs, positive or negative, but what it will do, what it's supposed to do, is equalize the playing field and put all businesses on the roll so that we can see what they are, and that we're able to assess them properly with the right information. And it's a technology issue that we are woefully behind on.
So the state legislators, state representatives, state senator, all of them need to get involved. We have an assessor, which you said is the first step. So the next step for residents is to write letters to them, really in protest, because when we get our tax bill, that's when you really, it hits you.
And we're about to get hit. So the, yeah, so we are in the third try, which is coming up next year. That's when the assessments get reevaluated, okay? We have support, we had support in the House by Will Davis for this Data Modernization Act, and in the Senate by Toy Hutchinson, even though she's leaving now. But those were the chief sponsors of this bill, and, you know, all of their colleagues were not supportive, and that's why it didn't get pushed along. I don't know if it's going through the veto session yet, but it will definitely be brought up next year, and we need to go to Springfield for that. We need to go and be there the day they talk about it. We need to tell them how it affects our area. So, that's what I'm saying about that.
Thank you.
I'm an activist, by the way.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for coming out today and, you know, supporting this, this meeting, you know?
Thanks for having me.
We thought we were going to have more, more people in the residence in attendance, but we appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, well, thank you. And please come, we're going to send the mayor, you have the information for the budget hearings that are going to be at the Markham Courthouse on November 4th.
Time.
It's at 5 o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Okay. Five, six thirty? Okay, so it starts at 6:30. All of the president's office will be there. This is where we say to the assessor who's going to be there, "What's up with this Data Modernization Act? What can we do to help? How is it going to help us? You know, what's been the problem?" And he is definitely committed to making sure the Southland gets the support it needs. And he's, I feel, exhibited that by being out here multiple times already.
Yes.
Okay? So, okay, sorry.
He's very pro, no, no. He's been very proactive in all the communities, explaining the program.
Yep.
So.
Yep. Thank you all, thanks for being here. It does make a difference.
I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. First and second, roll call.
Trustee Denton?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
I'm sorry I missed somebody. No, I didn't.
No, you didn't.
They missed us.
Okay.
I'm 22.
Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.